Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have Jerry Gaethor here with us from Weaver and Tidwell. And they're here to present findings from our annual CAFER. With that, Jerry, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. We've presented or given you a copy of this City of Lewisford Council meeting, which is an overview of the audit process and some of the financial information. So we'll take you through that to go through some of the information. It talks a little bit about the audit process, our required communications, audit results, areas of strength, financial highlights, and some new accounting pronouncements that will be effective next year. I'll walk you through the audit process and some of the communications and the results and turn it over to John Navarro to make a presentation of the financial highlights. I am Jerry Gaethor, by the way, the engagement partner with Weaver. John Navarro is the senior manager on the engagement. And we're certainly pleased to be here to present the results of the audit for 2014.
Would you like to move up to the table there? Why don't you both move up here to the table?
Thank you.
I think there's a couple of chairs there. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, that's fine.
I wasn't hiding these chairs. I just didn't know if I was wanting to take over or not. Thank you.
You bet.
And so with that, really on page four, there's an overview of Weaver, the firm of Texas, who we are. We're the -- we have seven offices in Texas with over 500 employees and 65 partners. We like to think of ourselves as the firm of Texas. On page five, again, you'll see myself and John's name and our roles in the engagement. We'd just like to add that we're available throughout the year to answer any questions that you may have when you engage Weaver as your audit firm. You're not engaging us just to come out to do the audit, but we're your audit firm all year round. So we're more than happy to answer any questions.
We take advantage of them.
The city management takes advantage of that. But if anybody on the council has any questions throughout the year about anything, we'd be more than happy to address those also. On page eight, we'll talk a little bit about the audit process. On eight, it goes through the engagement timeline. We performed our interim field work in September, starting in late September, finishing early October with final field work, middle of December through the middle of January, and released our audit opinion March 4th. And we're here today for the council meeting. The audit process, our audit was performed in accordance with general accepted auditing standards, general accepted governmental auditing standards in OMB A133. It's a risk-based approach to the audit. So we allocate most of our resources to the area of higher risk. All areas are covered in the audit, but we'd like to spend the time, most time, with areas of higher risk. Some of the risk areas that were identified were revenue recognition and receivables, capital projects, purchasing, compliance and bidding procedures, payables, accrued liabilities and expenditures, and state and federal revenues and expenditures, and the compliance requirements relating to those revenues and expenditures. During interim work in September and October is when we obtain our understanding of the internal control process. We do a walkthrough of the internal controls for all significant transaction cycles. What that entails is not only obtaining an understanding of the control cycles, but determining that the controls are operating as designed. So we determine how, what the controls are in place and how they're designed, and then we make sure they're operating as they're designed. After the cycles that we walked through, controls on were purchasing accounts payable, including P cards, payroll, cash receipts, taxes, municipal court utility billing, and capital assets acquisitions. After obtaining those understandings, we did test internal controls over some transaction cycles. We tested internal controls over cash dispersments and payroll. We also tested compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and with the bidding procedures. We also tested construction in progress during that interim work because we like to test the bidding process through that. And we usually select large construction projects to test the bidding so that we will take one project from the beginning of the bid, all the way from expenditures and change orders throughout the year. And we'll analyze several of projects for the year in their entirety, opposed to looking at a piece of the transaction. We'll look at everything that happened under that project for the year. That way, we'll test not only controls, it's a dual-purpose test. We'll test controls, but also be able to use that in our substantive tests also. During the interim, we also tested for compliance with the major federal program compliance requirements. The equitable sharing was the major program that was required to be tested this year. We're required not only to test internal control over those compliance requirements, we also are required to give an opinion on compliance. The significant compliance requirements for that program were activities allowed or unallowed, allowable costs, equipment and real property management procurement, suspension and barmen program income, and financial reporting.
Excuse me. What does this 386.70 represent?
Oh, the 386.70, that was a total amount of federal financial assistance expenditures under that major program for the year.
Thank you.
So we're required for a single audit, you're required to have at least 25% coverage of federal financial assistance. And you classify federal programs as type A or type B programs. Anything over $300,000 is a type A program. Then you evaluate it, whether it's a high-risk or low-risk program, depending upon findings and the complexity of the program. You have to test all high-risk A programs. If you have some low-risk type A programs and you have a high-risk B, you'll have to replace one of the low-risk As with the high-risk Bs. This year, the only requirement was to do the, the one program, and it made up 27% of total federal expenditures, and that was the dollar amount of $386,700. Sorry, I should have glossed over that when I was going through. During final field work, we'll test all significant accounts balances that show up in the financial statements. We'll test those balances through vouching of material transactions, through sampling of transactions, and applying annual procedures on the balances and make sure that relationships between account balances are reasonable. On all account balances, we'll perform some sort of annual procedures as well as the looking at the detail of the accounts. We also assisted with the preparation of the financial statements during the current year for the first two years of the contract as they were going through the system conversion. We assisted with the preparation of the financial statements. With that, there are some safeguards we have to put in place to maintain our independence. And that's just one of the reasons that we mentioned that because financial statement preparation is a management function. But we put adequate safeguards in place in accordance with the professional standards to maintain our independence in assistance in those preparations of the financial statements. On page 14, you'll see start some listing of some communications that are required, communications to governance. All of those communications are included. I'll just go through some of the ones that are the more high-level ones. The requirements won't change from year to year unless there's something that's specific that happened during the year. There's not a whole lot to present under those. So I'll just hit some of the highlights of those. The first one says our responsibility under general accepted auditing standards is to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement and express an opinion on the financial statements, whether they present fairly the financial position of the city. It does not relieve the town of its responsibilities relating to the city in terms of its responsibilities of relating to the financial statements. Our audit opinions, an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion on the financial statements, states that the financial statements fairly reflect financial position, the financial position. Audit, again, is performed in accordance with general accepted governmental standards, which requires a report on internal control relating to the financial statements. Our report on internal control has no material weaknesses in that report, so there's no findings noting that our report on internal control. In our report, in accordance with OMB A133, we include any internal control items over the compliance requirements relating to the program, major federal financial systems programs, and also give an opinion on compliance with those program requirements. Our opinion on the, for compliance, was unmodified opinion, and we had no findings related to the federal financial systems program. On page 17, talks about adoption of new accounting principles during the current year. The city was required to adopt GASB statement 65, which requires you to, on an ongoing basis, expense debt issue cost as they incur any debt, amortized debt issue cost that was on the statement of financial position at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, was charged to beginning net position. And for governmental activities, that adjustment was $628,035. And for the business activities, it was $574,290. As you go forward in the future, those costs will be expensed as you issue debt, as opposed to being capitalized and amortized over the future period. Jumping forward to page 19, I'd just like to bring your attention to section on audit adjustments. There were no significant uncorrected or corrected misstatements discovered as a result of our audit, which means we didn't propose any adjustments during the course of the audit. Financial looks were clean, and we didn't have to propose any or pass any adjustments during the audit. And the auditor's results, again, we kind of went through there. We got an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. There were no findings on internal control. And we had an unmodified opinion on compliance for the single audit and no findings on internal control relating to compliance requirements of major federal financial systems programs. And with that, I'll turn it over to John. John was the person in the field during the majority of the field work and had oversight responsibilities and worked more closely with management during the course of engagement. And I'll turn it over to him to go through the financial highlights.
Thanks, Jerry. And good evening, everyone. As Jerry mentioned, I'd like to provide you with some financial highlights. And beginning on page 24, we tried to present some information for you that's derived directly from the CAFER to kind of give you a snapshot of some different information. Some of the slides will provide you with some information on governmental funds, expenditures, both current year and prior year, as well as governmental funds, revenues. We'll also give you some information on the general fund budgetary performance and the utility funds. Beginning on page 24, this is a comparison of governmental funds expenditures by fund. And for those of you who aren't familiar with what governmental funds are, it contains your general fund, your debt service fund, your capital projects fund, the Castle Hills Pid Capital Projects Fund, and all of your special revenue funds, which are considered the non-major governmental funds. So here, we provide you with a breakout of expenditures by fund. You can see that the general fund, which is the operating fund of the city, contains the majority of the city's expenditures, made up 62% of the expenditures this past year. Overall, for fiscal year 2014, governmental expenditures totaled $105.5 million. And this was approximately a $14 million increase over the previous year. Now, there are some factors that go into this, obviously. The largest one is that capital outlay increased $7.5 million this past year due to the Castle Hills Pid Capital Projects activity. Debt service costs increased by $2.7 million due to higher principal and interest payments. But at the same time, I'd like to point out that the city's bonds payable did decrease this year by over $12 million. Also, another factor is that public safety expenditures increased by $1.7 million due primarily to increases in both personnel and maintenance costs. Now, if you flip to the next page, on page 25, this gives you a side-by-side comparison of the different functional expenditures that make up the increases or decreases. And here, you can see that the capital outlay, for instance, increased from $16.2 million in fiscal 2013 to $23.7 million this past year. Debt service increasing from $8.5 to $11.2 million, and public safety from $39.5 to $41.2 million. We provide you with a similar analysis, beginning on page 26, where the governmental fund revenues. Here, the governmental revenues for fiscal 2014 totaled $113.7 million, which was a $27.5 million increase over the previous year. And most of this increase is attributable to a $22.1 million contribution of special assessment fund proceeds for the Castle Hills Pid Capital Projects. Again, you can see the side-by-side breakout of where the revenues of the city, sorry, the governmental funds are recorded. In the previous year, almost 75% of the revenues were contained within the general fund. This year, because of the Castle Hills Pid, 60% of the revenues were in the general fund, whereas 20% were in the Castle Hills Pid. Again, turning ahead to page 27, this gives you a side-by-side comparison of the various revenue sources that comprise the governmental revenues. Taxes are the largest component of governmental revenues. And you can see that governmental taxes increased from $66.3 million in 2013 to $70.5 million in 2014. The other large contributor was contributions increasing from $1.4 million in 2013 to $22.2 million this past year.
On the taxes, did you break any of that out from adverum sales?
I can, I don't have the information, but I can certainly provide that. It is in the CAFER, I believe it's on page 33.
I was looking more percentage-wise. Is it still about the same?
Yeah, on page 33, they're all property and other taxes. They're all combined. I'll keep looking for that.
Okay. I can certainly provide that.
Actually, I was just looking. We've tried to keep it to where they're evenly balanced, about a third on each one of them so that it's not overly dependent on one particular area.
Can you still see that balance?
While Jerry's looking for that, I'm going to turn ahead to the fund balance analysis on page 28. And as of September 30th of 2014, city governmental funds had a total fund balance of $103 million. And you can see the breakout. The general fund contained $31.6 million of the $103 million overall. Debt service fund with $2.1 million, capital projects fund with just over $42 million, Castle Hills Pid, and the other special revenue funds, a little over $13 million each. Overall, the fund balance of the governmental funds increased by just over $12 million. And again, this is primarily due to the $13.1 million increase in the Castle Hills Pid Capital Projects Fund due to the $22.1 million contribution of special assessment proceeds.
John, can I add something?
Certainly.
You'll remember that you had three districts that actually sold debt this year. It'd be 1C, then do 1G, and 1H. And just so everyone knows, that's really not a financial responsibility at this juncture.
And overall, the general fund fund balance increased by $152,283 this past year. And the ending fund balance in the general fund of $31.6 million represents 48% of the fiscal year 2014 general fund expenditures. Just consider that a healthy. Turning ahead to page 29, this slide provides some budgetary information regarding the general fund. And this goes along with the budgetary comparison schedule on page 82 of your CAFER. Overall, the city had a favorable budgetary variance of $6.4 million this year, which is also considered a net change in fund balance. Couple of the components are that actual revenues were $4.8 million more than budgeted. And within this, taxes were $3.5 million more than budgeted, and licenses and permits revenue were over $0.9 million more than budgeted. On the other side, actual expenditures were $1.7 million below budget.
What's the half-made dollar on the license permits attributed to? Seems high for, the others, I could understand the other taxes, but the license and permits didn't seem like you had that.
For development, in home area, we're developing, and we have projected, we project very conservatively. And so it came in higher. The taxes at $3.5 million is predominantly sales tax.
Oh, is that right?
And finally, on page 30, we provide a comparison of utility fund operating revenues and expenses, which are the water and sewer fund. And you can see that operating revenues decreased from $27.8 million to $27.2 million this year, while operating expenses increased from $29 to $22.2. Overall, the utility fund net position increased by $6.4 million this past year, primarily due to the $3.9 million increase in developer contributions out of the previous year. As I mentioned, the operating revenues decreased $0.6 million. Operating expenses, the $1.3 million increase is due primarily in part to a $0.7 million increase in the cost of sales and service. And most of this component was actually a $0.9 million increase in maintenance project costs, also a $0.4 million increase in administrative costs, and a $0.2 million increase in depreciation expense.
John, do we have a, for Gina, do we have a sense of how much the change in water conservation contributed to the decrease in revenue?
I couldn't tell you a percentage off the top of my head. It didn't contribute to it. I'd say not significantly, but it was a contribution.
So it's a factor, but not?
It's a factor.
And finally, on page 31, we provided some information on standards to be implemented in fiscal year 2015. You may be familiar with what's called GASB 68, which is called Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pensions. It was issued a few years back, and now it's finally time to implement the standard. It requires, for the first time, governments to report a liability for pensions for their employees. And we will be working with Brenda and the rest of the finance staff to make sure that the city properly implements the standard.
Page 67 in your financial statements has an overview of the TRS, I mean TMRS payments. You're about 80% funded, so there's a $47.5 million unfunded liability. So that's the issue. And it'll be a government-wide entry that we're looking at next year. The other question on property taxes and sales taxes, on page 124 and 125 of the financial statements, you'll have a breakdown of governmental revenues for a 10-year period. So you can see how they have, what's been the makeup of those. Last year, total governmental activities revenue was about $72 million. $31.4 million of that was property taxes, and sales taxes was $29.3 of that total.
Jerry, you might talk a little bit about how TMRS compares to other pension systems as far as their funding ratio.
Yeah, it's, you know, looking at most entities, that's kind of where everybody's about, is about the 80% range. And it really just kind of ends up being the size of the entity, the amount of the liability that's there. You know, 80%, I would think it's a pretty good funding ratio compared to other entities. It's just the nature and the size of the organization makes the numbers large.
It's healthy in comparison to all the private sector underwriting.
No question.
Is there a requirement going forward that is increased up 100%?
No, there'll not be. And there's really no reason why you would want it to be 100%.
That's why I thought, but some of the laws don't make reasons.
No, it's, all it's going to do is, and the information's always been there. It's in the notes to the financial statements. It's going to bring it out on the financial statements. All of rating agencies and financial analysts that have been looking at your financial statements are well aware of that and take that into consideration when they're evaluating your financial statements. So it shouldn't have any significant impact. It's not recorded at the fund level for governmental activities, so it's not going to be a liability as sitting on the general fund. It's only at the government-wide level. So it really, you know, from the day-to-day operations of the city, except at the end of the year when you gasp and look at the number, only time you'll really be aware of it more than likely.
Counsel, if you may have any questions?
We're going to go on and talk about GASB 71.
GASB 71 is a transition. The TMRS is, the funded liability's at 1231, so there's some transition. There's going to be payments made between 1231 and the end. So it's just accounting for the transitionary period from the factual evaluation at 1231 to your fiscal year. It shouldn't have any significant impact.
Gina, you might want to share that with, my question earlier about the, how we?
When the mayor was talking about the actual percentage, we try to maintain it's a 30, 30, 30, 30, 30 on property tax, sales tax, and other revenue to reduce the reliance on sales tax primarily. So for the actual 13, 14, property tax was 34%, sales tax was 28%, and other was 38%. So that goes to show how diverse the revenue stream is. And I think that definitely makes the point that the mayor was trying to make. And also on licenses and permits, building permits were up over $250,000. So that was the majority of the increase we saw in licenses and permits.
And that doesn't take any consideration, some of this stuff's going out on the east yet, right?
That's correct.
If y'all remember, some of you remember that at one point, we had, we were heavily dependent on sales tax, and that was a concern. I remember, now it's brought that up several years ago, and said we need to work and whizzing that down so that they're more easily killed. And done a good job to act with less this year than the rest. So with sales tax picking up, that's a good thing, I think. Any comments or questions on it? Any, counsel?
Thank you. We appreciate all the support you get from city staff and all that. They make the audit very efficient and effective process for us.
Well, thank you for the job. Pleasure working with your colleagues.
Special thanks to Brian Hogan, too. Brian, please, I really think that we're all in that.
All right. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll go ahead and go to the regular agenda. We're going to change things up a little bit, counsel. We're going to do the prepared and pledge, and then we're going to do the presentations and proclamations. Then we're going to adjourn into closed session for consultation with attorney legal issues regarding to...
It's the landfill one.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
The landfill.
Yeah, the landfill. I just didn't see that up there.
It's number two.
Okay, there it is, yeah. landfill, landfill, farm, big landfill, so just like, give you a head. Okay, item one. Item two is public hearing. Item three is public hearing. Item four is a public hearing. Item five, also public hearing.
This is the ordinance that we discussed in depth with the council back in January to manage the construction impacts that have been created by the I-35 expansion. Mr. Ferris will do a presentation during the meeting.
And then we'll go to the, we'll sit again with item six. Item seven. Just one over. I think this was the one that came in, came back, and came in...
Yeah, bar station two came in significantly higher, and staff actually combined the two stations and went back down and actually came in combined under budget. So, and in today's world, with the increase in cost of concrete, that's amazing, so very, very pleased with that. Your design for kayak launch, two, one off of 3040. This was a high priority outcome in the 2025 committee.
Item 10. Hit the last one. We go to regular hearings, item 13.
On item 13, we'll be voting separately on those two variants. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, or separately, the mayor...
Separately, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
You'd like to have them separated? Anything else, counsel?
Legislature and cost of the rooms?
More south by southwest. Convene back into regular session, counsel. Is there any action to be taken?
Yes, mayor. I move to authorize the city's legal counsel to take all necessary action, including filing suit to protect the city's interests related to any decision on the TCEQ modification to municipal solid waste permit number 1312A.
We have a motion. Second. And a second, motion by councilor Ferguson, a second by councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Have motion adjourned by councilman Ferguson.
Second.
Second by councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?